Six thirty-three on November second, two thousand twenty-three. Okay, and I'm gonna do roll call. Mayor Pro-Tam Villalobos is absent. Mayor, I mean, Councilmember McGovern.
Here.
Councilmember Styler.
Here.
Councilmember McClabb.
Here.
And Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I am Mayor Glance. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
And then if you would remain standing. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for this meeting tonight. And Lord God, we just thank you for the beautiful city of Martindale. Heavenly Father, we do lift up all that is going on right now with the different grants. And we just ask for your discernment and that you give us wisdom. Lord God, we also just thank you for the gift of salvation in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, so we have public comments. And the first one was emailed in by Quentin Matthews. And he says, "The Texas State Historic John Creighton Sprawl Cemetery is a burying ground for Caucasians, African-Americans, and Native Americans. Yesterday, ground-penetrating radar was used to discover over thirty previously unknown unmarked graves at the cemetery. In all likelihood, these are the graves of the former slaves of John Creighton. It is a stain on the city's past that this cemetery was vandalized many years ago. Let's protect it for generations to come." I encourage everyone to go and have a look at the flags marking these forgotten souls' final resting place. Quentin Matthews. Okay, and the second one would be Mary Beth.
On October twenty-first, a couple of weeks ago, the library's launching an offensive festival. And this is partially funded by Rethan St. Peters. The highlights were a train ride through downtown. A lot of adults rode the train, in addition to kids.
In addition, mayor Davini.
And let's see, some police officers also.
Oh, yeah.
Luckily, the officer couldn't get in. He didn't get out. We also had a huge bounce house that was designed to look like a fire truck. And some of the fire department guys came down to look at it. They would not bounce it, though. They chickened out. Even there was some adults bouncing in the bounce house. They landed little kids off. On the same day, the friends in the library had an solid auction in Ralphel. And we're still selling Ralphel tickets. And some of the Ralphel items included a generator. And if it stays cold, you might want a generator in the future. There's a fire pit and a lot of other cool things. Tickets are still on sale. The winners will be announced at the tree lighting on December first. They're out tomorrow, November third, from three to five in the brick store. There's a vaccine lot area, I can't remember what's that, lot area. Anyway, it's like bingo. And there'll be game cards. You match your card to the things that are announced. And there's prizes for everybody. This is to get interested in vaccines. It is a legal event. This is sponsored by Vaccine Action Co., Inc. Then next week, on Wednesday, they'll be back from two to five. You'll get free vaccines. And I think they have flu. No, they do have flu vaccine. And I don't think they have, maybe COVID, I'm not sure. But they do have flu vaccine. And those, that's free. Some of you know anybody that still needs a flu vaccine. They can do that next Wednesday. On Saturday, November eleventh, in Tiagamadella, the fraternity will be here cleaning up yards and doing chores for our Martindale parents. Okay, Friday, December first, the annual tree lighting. That's how it'll ride through the neighborhoods. And after that, it will be available for pictures and children's wishes. Inside the library, we'll have Christmas activities. Also in Brookstore, the new vendors. And they'll be selling all kinds of homemade stuff, bears, food also, and music. Then on December the ninth, eleven, in the library, there's Cracker's Corner. Crafture, I said correctly. And someone's gonna teach how to do finger knitting, butter patty. It's okay, but if you're interested in that, December the ninth and eleven. Oh, yes, a proposition, Texas selection. Thank you.
Okay, Dorothy McGovern?
Uh-oh. Hi, I'm Dorothy McGovern. And just a quick, a couple of quick notes that I was thinking about before I came in here. We were having a conversation two weeks ago about why citizens weren't contacting councilmember via email and wanting to talk about things. And so this just hit me out today. So I wanted to just make you aware that one of the things that we're talking tonight is about construction and the new possible road improvements that are happening in the future. And so my husband and I were driving around just to look and see what roads were gonna be affected. And I know there's people out, sitting on their front porch steps. They're in their car, cooking something like that. And they have no idea that their road is gonna be contemplated tonight. And so I think they should know. It would be nice, so when they get a letter and says, "We're taking your property," they don't have to be surprised, like Northwest River Road. So just make that comment. And then the second thing that I wanted to comment on and actually get the council to think about it, and I would love to talk to anybody about this. It was the thing that Sam brought up at the last meeting, towards the end of the last meeting, on the property that crossed from yours, that is the gravel pit that the work, the new dirt is being dumped into. After that meeting, my husband and I had walked down. That was the weekend we walked down and saw the gravel trucks coming in and out. And we were probably there ten minutes. And there was like nonstop, nonstop, nonstop. So I know that we had talked about it. I don't recall if anything was done about it. I hope that something will be done about it because what they're doing is illegal.
They're bringing dirt in or taking it out?
Bringing it in.
And there was something done, there was something done about it. There is an engineer letter from Chris.
It's a comment, I believe it's just.
I know, but you can respond back on legal matters.
Okay. I believe it is in our ordinance that you cannot bring in any type of fill that's in that area of floodway, whatever you wanna call it. And that TECQ actually fined Lanzola for doing it down on the river. So I hope that someone on the council or administration can explain to me why that property owner hasn't been fined, but our neighbors, our new neighbors upstream have. And then lastly, on that, I found out that the same property that we're talking about is also, or part of the property is owned by the city, I believe. And someone is using that area to run cattle on it. If I'm mistaken, I do apologize if I might have gotten my information incorrect. But I don't think that I wanna give my taxpayer money to the city so that someone else can run their cattle on city land. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Matthews.
I do. Hello, my name is Matthew McGovern, living on two-one-three North River Road. I had a meeting a week ago, Monday. Actually, I'll go back. I had a meeting with the mayor. I took her to lunch two Fridays ago. And I went over some of the project of our road, North River Road, and some of the concerns I had. And after having that meeting at lunch, she became enlightened, I think, with a few things. And she suggested that Monday, when Turk was already gonna be in the city offices, that I at least express and give an update of the neighbors' positions regarding the project and some of the concerns that I had. And I'm gonna recap basically that discussion. So I told Turk that I'm probably the most reasonable one of any of my neighbors at this point with regard to the project. Everyone else is pretty much, you know, a no-go in any way, shape, or form. I presented to go what I'm showing you on the screen here, which is an example of a blow-up of one section of the road. So what you're looking at, at the very top where it says "The 2.1 edge of the road to the sewer" is the sewer line across the street from my house. Right now, this is the new plan, by the way, okay? So the new road is going to be 2.1 feet. That's from the center roughly of the sewer line to the edge of the road. The new road with the curb is 25.75 feet wide, so roughly 26 feet wide. The distance between that and the new sewer line is gonna be six and a half feet, which is as tall as you over here, dumbass. So it's taller than me by a lot. The distance that is between the sewer line and the water line requirement is nine. We're doing thirteen. And then the distance from the water line then to the right-of-way is another six and a half feet. All I said, as I said to Turk, is that's a lot of extra land that we don't need for the project other than it's a convenience thing. And the concern that is coming from people on North River Road is the distance. And so again, I went through them. I said, "Look, I'm doing the math here, and I'm thinking, I currently have a 15-foot right-of-way on the left side of that screen. And on the downhill side, it's 12." And there's little concrete posts that I've spray painted orange that have been there for forty, fifty years, at least since 1982 because the McCarel's bought their property in eighty-two and they were there then. I sprayed paint, and that is the right-of-way within a couple inches from one. Six inches, maybe. And so my concern and obviously the issue here is this is a lot more land that is absolutely necessary, quote-unquote, for this project. And so that was what I expressed during that meeting to this Turk. He obviously had other plans and was gonna present that in this meeting in a week from Monday. But I told him, "It's very hard for me to sell this plan to my neighbors because I can't buy into it at this point." And that was basically summary of the project. Then there was an issue about moving the road away from, or closer to the river, further towards the McCarel's, which this is the one I might give you a good map on. So I give you a handout.
So you asked a question?
No. I'm a public comment. You can ask a question to me later. You're the only one I talked to about this. And I did not allow another council person to come to the meeting because I was worried about quorum. And you already have a copy, so you don't, you know. Anyone else?
No, not you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have a report. I just have a comment. Last Monday night, we had a meeting here with Judge Hobbie Hayden and Commissioner Ed Theriault. They came to explain about the ESD five and tell us why they're seeking to have this passed. And it was really a good meeting. So Tuesday is the last day to vote. I'm not gonna tell you how to vote. I just ask you to please go vote. There's fourteen propositions. And then this county proposition of ESD five. So if you haven't voted, tomorrow's the last day of early voting. And then next Tuesday is election day. So, okay, we'll move on to wastewater report.
It's good to be first.
Get out of here.
First time in a while.
You bring cookies. No, if you bring cookies, you're Michael.
Yeah, right. Be a brother. I just, I'm gonna go ahead and start with the pumpage of the influent on the lift station. We pumped 1,352,143 gallons for the month of October. And the average came up a little bit, 43,670 gallons. I think last month it was like 41,000. I think maybe because of the new building here, it increased the flow. And we averaged, the maximum was 143,725. And the minimum was 24,138 gallons below. And I'm gonna go into the pump stations and stuff. We had no issues with the lift stations this month. Everything was okay, dory, but for a while it got quiet. It's good when it's quiet, I'm sure. And we had no irrigation down at the plant. We recirculated the effluent air just to aerate the effluent. And we collected a monthly BLB sample and checked the pH daily on the pumps. The pH seems to be staying at the same rate. It hasn't gone up, stayed within the eight and a halfway range or something like that. It's pretty good for this time of the year. And once it reaches wintertime, it should go down a little bit more because of saturation rates of water and stuff. Anyway, and also we recorded all the influent readings and calculated the influent flow. And checked, like I said, checked the pH of the pumps. And we checked all the wiring and panel boxes and starters. Made sure everything was fastened to the panels and stuff. Everything was okay. And we sure added that aqua fix. The thing seems to be doing pretty good.
Is it working?
Yes, it is. And also, it's still, the pumps are still low because we irrigated during the summer. Maintain a certain level on the pumps. And I guess you told me the lesson to remind you all about the projects that need to be done. One of them is this station here, the pumps, as Turk knows, I guess. And also the pump hole, and also the transfer box for the generator. And what else? We sent one pump in the other day to get it diagnosed. What's happened to it? You know, we know that it got wrecked up and it got, it went south. So they took it into exile to get it examined.
Was that the Madison pump?
No, 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 the Crockett station.
Oh, the Crockett.
Remember, we had that last event.
Yeah, the one, that's the one you, you fish, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you refound.
Yeah. And I invited the guy from Exile, if you wanna be present, Jerry, you and Mr. Purgeoff, next Friday, not this Friday, the next Friday, and the mayor. Isn't this the final outcome of the pump and what options we have? So just be aware of that. And what else? And I wanna get a price to clean the sewer lines and the lift stations. That really needs to be done too. So that's all I'm gonna do. Y'all got anything, anything from me?
So the sprinkler hands? So if you can get me the part and everything, we'll just order it on a credit card.
Okay. And I'll probably take care of that tomorrow. I'll call the guy at vendor.
I'm not gonna be here tomorrow. Call me on Monday.
Monday. We need to get that going. But other than that, I have other neighbors.
Well, maybe I'll ask them now then, and what kind of monies do we have to fix some of these concerns? I know we have a certain grant or, I mean, how are we planning to fix the pump or to do some of these cleanings that he's requesting now that we're going into the new fiscal year?
So we do a lift station cleaning, about, let's see, here, it costs us about $10,000 to do it. The clean the sewer lines is something that we haven't done. I'm curious if the price comes back to that. How we fund cleaning sewer lines is a little bit of an open question at this point, how we do it. We'll find, depending on the cost, we'll find what makes sense. And then the Crockett lift station repairs, the generator transfer box. A lot of that was covered under a grant that we got notice that we're receiving. I don't know if that got contracted yet. But we have a grant on the way. So, yes, a few hundred thousand dollars.
Three, four hundred?
It's short of 500,000.
Yeah. So that's, that's the one I was referring to, yeah.
That one's gonna take care of a lot of this, but maybe not all of it. So then we're gonna have to de-conflict our, the final spend plan with, that's on that grant, with our funding spend plan. Between the two, we probably have, separate from any engine nearing costs, probably close to 400,000 to 500,000 dollars in direct maintenance activities that we can apply to our stations and once for our system.
I don't think that grant covers the pumps.
Maybe not the pump, but I thought they're fixing that, but.
That might be in there. Well, no, that was such a small cost, we took it out.
I think we thought there was a, like, the pump hole.
Yeah, you guys should be able to.
So we have to de-conflict. That's, yeah, so.
And I'd like to know the estimate of the engineering costs of this and how much of that will be consumed out of the grant.
Most of the engineering costs under grant programs are set at a rate not to exceed a total percentage. Each grant is different, I'm sure, once we have the contract in hand. And if we're prepared to sign that venture to that, we'll have that detailed for you.
Yeah, because we had spent a lot on previous grants through the engineering firm. And we spent a lot on certain grants, and so it's getting costly for us.
So where we've paid in advance for engineering help on submitting proposals, so far, we're back to thousands on getting those grants. I think we still have one outstanding that we're waiting here back on.
Because that's a sidewalk?
Yeah. We expect to receive, we scored the highest on that project, but I haven't seen that come through yet. So so far, the money's gone to good use, and we've had a lot of success with our grant proposals where we need engineers.
Okay. I will sign off.
The engineering for the CDB grant was free.
Yeah.
For the pump grant, for the grant that we're gonna use to fix the wastewater treatment plant? Well, he said not including in engineering costs that are outside of the grant.
The work that was done to put the application together?
Yeah, there's really some engineering involved with, because I believe irrigation system upgrades is part of it. We'll need to have some, a lot of support to design that irrigation system. So there's expected to be costs that will be paid for out of this grant funds to do some of that more detail.
Thank you.
Like I said, I'll just keep harping at it.
Yeah, keep all that, man. Appreciate you. Appreciate you. Keep going.
Thank you. All right. Well, our attorney's not here. And I don't know. I hadn't heard from him that he wasn't coming. So I know you had asked if we could talk about the contract. I think we can talk about it in public, actually.
Which contract?
For the Northwest River Road grant. It's a public document. I mean, it's, we don't have it here online. It was supposed to.
Well, I'm on the attorney.
Councilmember McClabb asked if we should go into.
I've just asked a question if we should go in.
To our attorney about the contract, but.
There is a contract, but.
I put it on there just in case, but I.
I'm just asking a question. It's done.
What would you like to know?
I just wanna know if it's any legality issue, if it's a contract, could we get in trouble?
The biggest legality is it could be on the hook for any costs that have already been expended without finishing the project.
No, what I mean is not, not, you know, with contracts, we usually go to executive. That's my only question. Should we discuss it in public or should we go in executive session with our attorney? That was my question. That's all, just a question. I was asking, well, you're closer to attorney than I am, so legality-wise.
If you wanna discuss, like, attorney's advice on modifications to a contract or liabilities that the city has regarding that contract, then yeah, I think it's best to wait for him. If it's of a general nature regarding how the grant operates or what's covered in the contract, then I'm more than happy to.
Spoken like a true attorney. You're gonna be a good one. I just asked you to question.
Well, okay, so if we're gonna talk about the Northwest River Road grant, I think I overheard that 15% of that grant goes to the engineer.
And it's well deserved.
And so that's a certain monetary amount, perhaps 560,000. I mean, and you mentioned last time that we're on budget with that. And I wasn't sure what "on budget" means. Does that mean you're almost close to exceeding the amount of money that you're allotted or you're on budget for paying subcontractors or what?
So here's how it kinda works. The, we get, the grant funds are not dispersed all at once. They're given to us, allotted to us in stages as we complete certain tasks. And vendors, whether it's our grant administrator firm, Linkford, or our engineer for Freeland Turk, they get paid as we hit those stages for work already performed. And so early in the design stage is where there's a lot of engineering costs and contract administration costs as we go through the environmental reviews, surveying, all that. So those costs are heavily upfront in those initial phases as we get to levels of completion. The next phase is as we get into this contract. We now have the authority to proceed full-out with the contract. We've completed all the preliminary matters that are required. The next stages are land acquisitions applicable, which so far they are. And then the build construction bid phase, and then actual construction phase. And so as the, under the grant program, the administrative costs and the engineering costs cannot exceed a certain level of the total cost of the project. And so that's limited as a not-to-exceed number. Most of the time, we're gonna come up real close to that, or it's not a guarantee that we would spend up to that.
What's an example of an administrative cost?
So our grant administrator, they manage the environmental review process. That's required under the EPA rules and HUD rules and other things, including the surveying of the cemetery and some of that. So they, more of those costs is the direct costs that they use to manage that process. More of the other admin costs are, you know, handling the billing, make sure that it wasn't repaid every, which way. Maintaining contact with the state on the grant program. Checking with them, submitting documentation that's required as we hit those different phases. So there's a significant amount of work that they're doing. It's not a ton of work. But a city our size is oftentimes forced to use a grant administration service to take down without learning, burdening the staff. Other larger cities might still contract out some of that administration services if they don't have the resources. I don't get the actual contract to give you the percentage.
That's right here.
It's 15%.
15%.
Yeah, it is 15%.
In terms of percentages, though, yeah, engineering fees up to 15% of the total budget. I think the administration's up 13%. So we're in that range. So.
It's just that the project has changed so much since it was initiated, you know, because he did some very nice drawings of the road going all the way down to Whale Run. And then it was scaled back. So of course, we were paying for those drawings. And then we scaled it down again. And then you've probably done some preliminary or you've done some secondary, maybe drawings of the requests of the people that live on the road. I mean, you've changed, and so you're drawing and creating more. And it would, I would assume that we're getting very close to the 15% costs. And then once we do that, maybe, you say it comes in phases, but it's gonna get to be where. And then once we do that, maybe you say it comes in phases, but it's, it's, it's gonna get to be where the city. When does the city start to have to pay for the costs of this grant when we exceed fifteen percent?
We don't.
We don't, so.
We, we, we don't pay anything?
The way that's, this contract is, that, that risk is borne by the provider. Um, so if there's, if there's additional engineering work, unfortunately, that's part of the business. However, I, I assume that Freeland Turk had some risk mitigation in their pricing schedule, um, to account for that sort of thing. Anytime you have a quasi fixed price for the contract, you wanna have somewhat of a risk adjusted.
I, I don't know.
It was like the, Jessica brought up in Grand, she had to pay out of her budget to do the study on the, um, on the cemetery. And she made us think about, well, that came out of my budget. You know, I mean, she didn't expect it because like you said, I'd never done a cemetery before. But it came out of, it fell under her section of the responsibility. So that, whatever, I don't even know how much money it was, but I do know that came out of her budget.
The, the city's, the full responsibility that cities wanna have under this grant program is just shy of sixty thousand, sixty seven thousand dollars.
Is the match.
Is, and that's a matching contribution and that's envisioned to be done during the construction. And so, we're, we're not any risk on doing this other than timeline. This is the biggest concern.
Now, this is appropriate time. Can I ask, can, can I get the answer that, uh, Mr. McGovern asked Mr. Turk Monday? About the width of the right of way?
Well, we're gonna do that next. On the thirteenth.
I didn't should wait. I was just, I was only saying that so that.
Okay.
It was transparent because I got a phone call from someone who did not like that they couldn't come to the meeting. So I was making sure everyone knew what happened.
Well, that's all right. I didn't wanna do.
I didn't want anyone to feel that they.
Yeah.
There was a reason why it was that way.
I guess, I guess.
I just wanted everyone to be, to be upfront than what, what I said, you know, that's all I said.
I guess my only question with Northwest, I've gotten emails from irate landowners at Northwest River Road. And I wanna ask the question, have, has boring been considered?
Yes, it's been considered.
Because, now get, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's the biggest issue because I see save our trees, save our trees. And if we could bore under these trees, you know, the ones that aren't trash trees or, you know, they're pecans or oaks or whatever. Not, not, not chinaberries or hackberries, I understand, but if, if we can bore, if that's, so that's, so that's put on the table.
But I, I don't, it's being looked at. Um, I encourage your constituents or reaching out to you and let them know about the meeting on Monday. Um, that's where we'll have a longer discussion about the different, um, secondary alternatives that are being considered.
And also, my other question was maybe considering, uh, hiring a, an arborist as a consultant to see what are the, you know, what can we do to help? These trees survive if you bore under.
I think some of that may come out of the meeting on Monday depending what the design going forward is gonna be. I think we really to commit to it. I like that.
But that's, I mean, that to me.
Yeah, I agree. Until you decide where it's going, then.
I just, I just, it's those only two, two points I wanted to make because people, I mean, I actually got attacked and, uh, I, I was, so.
I hope that's.
Because, because, you know, that was a tag, that's fine. That's no, we, we, we got, we got, we got thick skin in this business. But, but, but the re, the reason I even mentioned the bore because eventually when they do the project, I have a tree that'll be affected. And I won't, I wanna save that tree and I wanna bore under that tree. That's why I was brought that up several years ago about boring under that water line under the tree. That was brought up very first. Have you been with that, Mr. Turk? I brought that up on the first meeting. Because I know it's in the right of way and I just would like, I want the road to happen, but I, I wanna save a tree, so that, that's it. That's all.
Come on Monday.
I won't be here. I'll be in Mexico, so.
Since the thirteenth, not this.
Oh, a week from Monday.
The following Monday.
Yeah.
A week from this Monday.
So not the sixth, the thirteenth?
Oh, I'll be here. Okay.
The sixth is the sirens. The sirens is supposed to come about one o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Third, Monday to thirteenth.
Thirteenth, yeah.
On the way.
So, so you wanted us to talk tonight more so about the grant and the operation of the grant, not the specific engineering, like nine feet between.
Oh, yeah, no, it was specifically about the contract. If we wanted to talk to our attorney about the contract.
Well, how do you feel it's going about the contract?
Well, I think it's, I mean, it's a contract. I mean, it's been signed.
It's going.
They were going, we were gonna help build this road and water.
Well, you're tough, Clint.
Your opinion on the contract, how it's going, you know?
It's, I'm, you know, we're in negotiations.
I mean, you've been in the middle of it, so I'm just, I'm, I mean, I, I'm just.
I would really like.
Listening tonight myself.
Really like to find a compromise that we all can live with and, uh, you know. I think it's important for the council to know that we have a contract. We would have to pay money back. We just ditched it. And, and everybody wants roads, so let's go into the next.
Go on the roads.
I wanted to go back in memory lane here for just a minute before we started.
Sorry, the last thing you said, we would have to pay money if we ditched it? What? I mean.
Well, that's, and that's what's very sad.
That's something that our attorney could probably.
Okay, no, I just, I just heard that at the very tail end, so I.
Our attorney's not here, so we can't talk.
No, no, I just, I'm just, I had emailed to restate that because it just sort of happened real fast.
Well, I think it's important to recognize that just shy of six hundred thousand dollars has been spent on this contract already. And if it's not, if the city doesn't perform on the contract, there's a potential that that becomes a cost borne by the city alone. Um, and then.
See, that's my point exactly. That's why I was saying about executives for that point.
And Jessica from.
That's a question I'm gonna ask.
We will have to pay it back.
That's the question I'm gonna ask.
Well, that's why I ask about the cost that the city has the burden having to pay at certain point in time and it seemed like no, the grant.
On, on the contract, sixty seven thousand dollars is all our matching contribution. However, if the city breaches its contract obligations, that's where we need our attorney to weigh in on what, what that will look like. And advise the city council legally on how to approach the scenario. But the, the cost spent to date just shy of six hundred thousand, depending on the attorney's, um, view on this, could potentially come back on the city. So the city could be staring at a bill of six hundred thousand.
Then already paying one off already.
Plus, I think we want, uh, we want a new road and we want the, the, what do you call it? The fixing all of the water stuff. So, I mean, it's something that we had wanted. Uh, so I wanted to go back to December of twenty twenty and the mayor's report at that time. He did like a state of the union address. It's twenty one pages long. But five pages in, he says, review DCS presentation for twenty eighteen. So this is, you know, the roads are something that mayors have been dealing with for quite a few years. The first question before the council is, are we all still in agreement that roads should be the first priority? And until we have replaced at least one road, focus on something else. And then he goes on, on the next page, talking about, uh, what the DCS engineering firm recommendations were. So, uh, I know there's been comments, even when I was campaigning, uh, back in twenty one. It was like the first priority for the public seemed to be roads. And here we are, we're trying to fix roads, we're making suggestions and it's a little rocky. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
That was all my campaign stuff.
What, what meeting was that?
It was in December of twenty twenty.
You don't know the date of the meeting?
Um, it should be on here, but I don't.
Why have we only just one?
Yeah, there was probably just one in there.
Okay, thank you. You're probably right.
Um, so now, I imagine you were in some of those discussions about fixing roads and what a priority it is. We all know how bad our roads are here in Martindale, so now tonight, we're gonna go into a presentation. This kinda came out of, uh, the Northwest River Road grant when we were discussing, can we get another grant to continue? Um, so that's what we kinda did. So I'm gonna let you take it from here.
All right. So just so everybody knows, the, the city was awarded another two point.
Three million, I think it was.
It's called a, a modification, uh, to the GLO grant. Uh, and there's an application that's due December first, I believe. Uh, and to, to be able to fill out that application submitted, you have to select projects.
Well, we got two million to work with right now, right?
This is over.
This is mentioned over.
Tonight, we're, we're gonna decide, you're gonna give us a list of these projects and we'll make a choice.
And if we don't wanna make a choice tonight, if we wanted to do a special meeting next week, we can. But Mike's gonna be gone, so we'd have to make sure the other four people would be here and the attorney could be here if we were to have another special. If you didn't feel comfortable making a decision, but we definitely have got to make a decision as soon as we can. If we wanna apply for this particular grant, it's basically ours, but we do have to put it in the application.
You put that back up the list?
Yeah, I'm going.
So this, this list, um, about a month ago, we, we presented to council, asking our, um, engineering firm to take a, a look at possible projects. And what he's gonna present tonight are those projects the city council recommended that he, he evaluate. And so, um, this isn't entirely, you know, to council on this issue. And I think we'll, we'll give it to you, Tom, to.
Right.
To talk through each project.
So as Garrett said, the, the, the city asked us to go back and look at each one of these projects. And do a, have a cursory preliminary engineering report, uh, along with a project layout and a cost estimate. And you see the summary of the cost estimate there. More than happy to go project by project, uh, real quickly and just explain to you, uh, what we are doing. And what it looks like and how much it costs. Does anybody have a preferences to where we want to start?
Let's just start the top of the list. I think speaking to the, to the maps is probably gonna be best. And then we can, um, as we discussed there, we can hit the high points on cost.
All right, Adrian, can, on Gonzalez Street, can you go to the project layout? This strong?
That's right.
I'm going. So we were asked to look at Gonzalez Street between, uh, Main and Bowie Street. It's about a thousand feet. The right of way varies from about fifteen feet to thirty six feet. Street width varies from about twelve feet to twenty four feet. Uh, the pavement condition is poor, uh, and we have all kinds of utilities, uh, along the way. What we're proposing is a twenty two foot wide street and a fifty foot right of way. Uh, the street should have curbs, two inches of hot mix asphalt and eight inches of base and have the subgrade prepared. I wanna stop right there because this is a very important, uh, assumption on our part that applies to almost all the other projects. You can see from the layout, uh, we're, uh, suggesting you acquire a considerable amount of right of way. Uh, that it's gonna have some significant, uh, tree impacts and require some significant tree removals. Wanted to make sure, uh, that we were crystal clear about that as early as possible.
You're also getting really close to some people's land.
Uh, and, and their houses.
Yeah.
And is tree removal, are those, are those like oaks or pecans?
Yeah.
There's a layout.
Yeah.
Are those what the green dots are?
Yes, those are what I would call notable trees.
Don't you call it notable?
Notable. So, so they, they have a pretty good size, nice trees, um, that are somewhere near the right of way or near the project that might be affected. I figured that's what, those are the trees that you'd wanna see. Uh, so let me talk about the fifty foot and right of way first. So, uh, whenever you have a project that's funded by a federal grant, you have to follow, uh, some kind of, uh, criteria. That you can substantiate. Uh, so what I did is I did, uh, research in the region as to how wide the right of way should be for a local street. I looked at Caldwell County, I looked at Hayes County, Guadalupe County, I looked at the city of San Marcos, Ulan. I even looked at, uh, the city of Martindale, what you require developers to do. And out of all that research, the minimum I found was fifty feet. Uh, and that happens to be Martindale criteria. Uh, so that's what we should be getting for a two-way street so that it's safe, it's constructible. We have room to put utilities, sidewalk, whatever, whatever we wanna do. And then the width of the street, um, same group of agencies I researched, the minimum was twenty two feet. The city of Martindale requires thirty one feet. I did some judgment and some interpretation and I said, well, that additional eight or nine feet is probably for on-street parking. So I'm good with twenty two. You wanna stick to the thirty one? I'm all ears, but twenty two is, is good enough for me. So that's an assumption that we made.
The twenty two also has the curb as well.
We have a curb in there.
So that's, that's where I got to when I showed the twenty six something feet by the time you add a foot and a half or two feet on both sides. Is that fairly accurate?
It's, it's gonna be twenty two feet curb to curb.
Are these raised curbs or the flat curves?
Um, at this point, it's a header curb, so it's flat.
Flat.
Uh, they could be raised curbs, but, uh, I think it's gonna be easier to build and construct using header curbs. They have the same effect.
I'm gonna go back and ask, but Northwest River Road, I did that measurement from the edge to the edge, it's almost twenty six feet. You're, you're doing curb on the edge in addition to the twenty two feet on the Northwest River Road project?
I'm going twenty two, twenty two feet, edge of curb to edge of curb.
So Northern Edge is bigger.
I think it's what he's gonna add.
Northern, Northern River Road is bigger, it's wider.
Outer edge, outer edge, two feet.
So Northwest River Road project is bigger?
It's bigger.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, that's.
But you said a fifty foot easement total.
Right, right of way.
Right of way. Twenty five on the center is the rule. When they, when they did, we did the subdivision, that's why they had to go twenty five feet off the center of the road.
Gonzalez Street is used more than people would realize. They come around the Methodist church and come downtown.
It's a, it's a tricky, it's a tricky road.
And that road is messed up.
Yeah. It's completely failed. The, oh, well, the real issue is you see there's a house right there that the road will literally, not that it's not close already, but you're asking to basically. How does that input, impact the ability for them to build or do anything to that property? They're no longer at the setback.
It'd be continued non-performing use. So if that structure would happen to be destroyed greater than fifty percent, you know, fire, flood or something. Then they would have to rebuild it and it's probably a slight limitation unless they were able to get the board adjustments, council to agree to the variance.
Which would be fair, but I mean, that's an also, that's also a historic home.
It's in the United, yeah, in, in the United States.
Yeah.
Historic.
The other, the other concern I have is the, the previous cover restrictions. You're gonna take some feet from the small lots, but you're gonna squeeze them again.
Which house we talking about?
Any of these houses. I think it's labeled the Arby. The Arby is the most obvious, but a lot of these, just keep that in mind, guys. You're, you're reducing their lot sizes with an R O W and so you're reducing their previous cover.
But she's got a lot of land back here in the back.
I understand, but in general, that's.
He or she.
It's gonna impact a few other ones when we go to the next, the next one.
So, uh, I, I wanna, I wanna stop here and say that I know what I'm showing you is highly invasive and highly impactful. And I'm not having fun doing this.
It's a hard job right now.
Yeah, this is, this is pretty serious, uh, and, uh, I, I, in, in, in a lot of ways, I'm kind of the messenger. I've, I've gone as narrow as I can, uh, both the right of way and the, the street width to remain, you know, within, uh. Applicable engineering standards, uh, and I realize that trying to meet those standards is, is very, uh, very difficult. And impactful on, um, the adjacent property.
I think it's important to convey that you're doing the best job you can to be the least invasive as possible, to all those.
And we're valuing alternatives. None, none of these projects are for sure. The goal tonight is to decide on one project. The goal tonight is to decide on one project or maybe multiple projects within the budgeted amount to proceed with the application.
Another issue with this street and a couple of others is there's no turnaround at the end. You know, if you had a developer come in and subdivide, he would have to put a cul-de-sac on the end, a very large cul-de-sac. I even tried to put in some hammerhead turnarounds and it's ugly. It's just ugly any way you slice it. So drainage improvements, for Gonzalez Street, I don't anticipate any storm sewer. There's not a lot of water that comes to the street. And we can drain it through the Bagley, I think it's pasture or landfill or something, down to F M nineteen seventy nine.
What, what effect does the floodplain have on this?
It's, it's within a hundred year floodplain.
Yeah.
So what we're going to be doing is nominal grading. We're going to try to more or less grade things as they are today. So we won't be impacting.
The downside with this project and the the next couple is that it becomes a more difficult application because we're not able to say that this project served entire community. And it has to, under the program, be a certain threshold of supporting low to moderate income households. And so the project would have to support projects following within that description. In order to do that, we'd have to do house to house survey, reach these project areas where where we don't have a citywide benefit. The citywide benefit projects are those low moderate income statistics relative to take from the whole city. And we have those statistics on hand. So in terms of feasibility, it's plausible we could, we could proceed on this project. But it is, it is a more difficult administrative burden to submit on the project and some of these others that in this, in this area of town.
Yeah, I think Gonzalez is not an example of low to low to moderate in in income of our population within the city.
It would be difficult.
I, I don't see that at all.
So moving on, trees, as I mentioned, we're going to move the trees to establish a clear zone and get utilities in and what have you. On this particular project, there's actually a little little room and some linens that we could do to minimize that, but we're still going to lose some trees and some nice ones. Right of way and easements, so you can see on the layout where we are proposing take additional right of way to get that fifty feet. We also need a drainage easement going to nineteen fifty nine. And then for this project and all the projects, we may need some temporary construction easements in some select places to accommodate construction. Utility relocation, replacement, all of the utilities in the street. With the exception of the wastewater would have to be relocated or replaced. The wastewater line would probably just have to adjust the manholes. It pretty much stays in place. And we would propose that be done prior to construction. So they're out of the way of the contract.
So would this replace water lines or does the?
I would recommend they do that, it's a decision up to Martindale or Spile Corp. They would decide that.
They would have to replace them.
They would have to.
If we chose this one.
That's correct.
The sewer line on Gonzalez, as you go towards Bowie Street, has sunk down. So you're saying you wouldn't have to replace that or you're just going to fill in on top of it? I mean, there's, you can see where the sewer line is and and it's this low down on top of the sewer line. So are you guys going to build the dirt over the low part of the road where the sewer line is?
For the street, we wouldn't be excavating any more than a foot to a foot and a half. The sewer line are typically five to six foot deep in some places, more in some places, less. So we're, we're just working really at the surface. So we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be destroying any sewer lines. If if we are, they'll be replaced as part of the project. That's simply an assumption we're making at this point. We have contingency in the cost estimate in case we run into things like that. But that's the best information that I have at this point.
Sure, that sewer line right there, it looks like that because it didn't do it right then until it's so.
You get a lot of runoff from the Bagley field, though. I don't know if just a regular head curve would would be sufficient there. I mean, you're, you've got to prevent the water from coming off the field there and going on, on to the street.
Going to east though.
The, the field is downstream of Gonzalez? The field between Gonzalez and nineteen fifty nine?
The one where you get the Bagley field, the drainage, it seems like it comes across and goes into the road. But you're saying it goes downward?
Yes.
I think that's just huddling on the, on the edge of the road that that happens there.
I don't think the drainage in nineteen seventy nine is all that great. And there may be some potting there, but that's where the water goes. Let's see, construction sequencing, utilities, then we go in and construct the street. Pretty straightforward. Traffic handling, we would attempt to build this road in half-street so that there's, there's at least a one lane road open at all time. There will be times where people on the road will have to navigate through the contractor's mess. But generally speaking, you should have access at all times. Permitting, just a floodplain permit, that's from the city. There are no other permits required. And then you saw the summary of costs, construction's about two hundred thousand. Any questions on Gonzalez Street before I move on?
On Mari's property there, and I know it from when Susan Smith, Susan and John Schmidt lived there, that I had heard that their property actually goes farther into almost the middle of Crockett Street.
Who's Mari?
Don't, don't.
Okay.
You, you only show an easement of that red, very skinny triangle. But I have heard in the past that his land goes almost all the way across Crockett Street.
I, I'm going off of Caldwell County Appraisal District right of way lines.
Well, we should check deeds on, on.
Sure, when and if the project becomes a real, we'll do that exactly. We'll, we'll survey the apparent right of way line and collect all the deeds, easements, what have you.
Okay, okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
What's the next project?
Fannin.
Let's see. Fannin. Seven hundred and fifty feet long, right of way from twenty to thirty feet, street width twelve to twenty, pavement condition poor, utilities all over the place, same thing, fifty and twenty two.
Trees, lot of trees.
Lot of trees.
This is a lot of trees.
We know about trees now, so.
So I'm going to, I'm going to skip over a lot of this stuff because frankly, it's the same. Same, same issues, pretty much, construction cost one hundred and seventy four thousand.
The, the difficulty with the turnaround is the more pronounced on this street because it dead ends onto a private road. Unlike the Gonzalez, where you do have an adjacent turn, think Bowie. This one is dead, so that that becomes a little bit more difficult.
Into two houses.
Yeah, and like I say, you could put a hammerhead turnaround over there, but it's ugly. I mean, it's just ugly. What's the next one?
Crockett.
Okay, more of Minnis?
Is this the one?
It's going to be really hard.
You've got drainage improvement too?
On Fannin?
No, on Fannin or Crockett, which one are you?
On, on Gonzalez, we had a little drainage ditch. The other ones, so far, we don't have any storm sewer. Pretty much the same thing, Crockett seat seven hundred feet. At the end of it is your lift station site, which is not easy to get in and out of, by the way. I found out that personally. Pavement varies from eleven to twenty feet, poor condition, same, it's pretty much the same stuff. And you see the trees, ugly, really ugly.
And there's down near the lift station, really significant right of way catcher up to people's front door.
The road, the road is, the road is barely gravel. It's enough width to get in and out, that's about it.
And does it need to be fixed? Yes, but.
That's your lift station.
You're going to be in people's houses with the right of way.
Yeah.
That road is nineteen seventy nine. On your map, you have seventy six.
That is the first mistake I've ever made. Gary says that all the time.
So on, on Crockett at the very end there, next to the lift station, how, how wide are those acquisitions there?
Uh, let's see.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
As a right of way varies from thirty five to twenty feet. I think down at the end, it really narrows. So fifteen feet each side, more or less?
No, one, one side it's dilapidated homes, but on the other side it's not.
And there's a few citizens, but he's going to be very much closely against.
Chris Moore.
And for the purposes, for the purposes of this report, we took right of way more or less evenly from both sides. It, it may be that once we get all the survey data and we know everything, we might be able to take more from one side than the other to save trees and things like that. So we can, we can refine and adjust in design, but again.
Well, like Crockett, as we know, is a dead end street. So how is this going to help when, I mean, is someone just going to go down and turn around or back into a driveway and come back like they've always done?
We can, we can put a hammerhead on the end of it. It's ugly, I mean, you have to get some more right of way.
Pretty.
They run about twenty five thousand bucks.
So much of that is in the floodway and the floodplain?
All of the floodplain.
All of the whole?
Not, not in the floodway, but it's in the floodplain.
From nineteen seventy nine all the way to the lift station, pretty much?
I think so.
A large portion of it.
Both the towns on the flood, floodplain.
Yeah.
Both if not. Any questions on Crockett?
So Crockett, Fannin, still that we have the administration, administrative issue of putting in a proposal for these projects. I mean, do house to house surveys. That location is likely more economically depressed, probably would qualify. But it's still being a little more of an admission for me to go after them, but do.
All right, Northwest River Road, S Curves to Quail Run. You may remember this was once in the current G L O M I T project. We had to take it out because basically inflation ate up part of the grant money. And so we had to reduce the size of the project. So what we're proposing there is, let's see, hold on, it's twenty two hundred feet. Right of way width is already about fifty feet. Street's about twenty feet, it's in poor condition, all kinds of utilities. Again, proposing fifty foot right of way, which we already have, so there's no acquisition. We're proposing a twenty two foot wide street. And there's very little drainage work to be done at all. There's already a ditch there and it would basically remain the same. We might clean it out a little bit. There are notable trees along the way. Most of them are at the right of way line or outside of the right of way. I doubt seriously we'll have any tree impacts on this project at all.
Could that be, I mean, this, this doesn't really service low income, but does?
But this is a whole city.
Whole city, okay, it's a whole city. So it's not, that doesn't pertain to this particular grant.
It's a more thorough favor of the side.
It's a lot of connectivity to it.
Connectivity, okay, that's. So it'd rate the same as the first phase of the project?
Yeah, this, this one's administratively a lot easier to put in there.
Since we got, since we've already had it approved before.
This is a good looking project.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Does it include drainage at the very end?
No, I included that in the quail run.
Okay, I'm on the same, just let him do the next one and I want to talk about that.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting one. Which one do you want to do next?
Quail Run.
Quail Run, okay. Quail Run.
I think the next one's on River Bend, but.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, River Bend, okay, we'll do that one. All right, get down to the project layout.
I'm walking. This is the layout. Hurry up, Ed. If you go too fast, I'll do a round.
It'll be ten pages ahead.
Oh, wait, I have, I have a question. When was all these drawings and all that submitted for review prior to this meeting?
This afternoon.
When?
This afternoon about noon.
Wow.
Wow.
That's right. Speedy. I've been busy today, so I hadn't had a chance to look, look at it. I mean, I, I feel hard pressed. I hope we don't have to make a decision tonight about this. Is that what you're ass, asking the council to do?
Well, let's finish the presentation.
Let's go with the presentation, go.
Okay. So so as I understand it, this is a, a significant flooding problem. The structure, I think y'all got kind of a look at it as we're setting up the drawing, but it's a, I think it's an old C C C structure.
Looks pretty stout.
It's actually in fairly good condition, it's just small.
Is there any way that, so you had to take it all out, could you modify it?
We'd have to take it out. Have to take it out, yeah. So we're recommending a three ten by five multiple box culverts. If, if this project moves forward, we can, I would really like to start playing with that. We have kind of a challenge, we got to get under the sewer line and so we have many, many. It's actually pretty deep.
There's also a separate lift station in that area that's no longer used.
Oh, it's not.
No.
So how much money we talk about, this is for the bridge only?
Seventeen hundred, or seven, one point seven million.
One point seven million, I think.
I take, I would take most of it.
And this was one of the grants that was applied for at the same time as the Northwest River Road grant, but this one didn't get approved.
Yeah, this was tied into the county. The county was doing a, a bridge project and as one bid submission and then a evacuation center as a second, a bid submission. This is part of the county's bridge project, but unfortunately did not get.
So, so tonight, we're going to determine priority, like this is our first choice, second choice, third choice, blah, blah, blah.
Well, depending on the sense of council and as the mayor mentioned, if we can get a decision tonight, that, that helps us meet our deadline of December.
I mean, I would just say right now.
If we don't get a decision tonight, we'll have to call a special city council meeting like the next week.
Okay, for me, for me, for me personally, I mean, that bridge would be great. That's going to take everything, one bridge is going to take the whole chunk of change.
It's a big project.
I mean, I, if we had five or six billion to work with, but I, for me, that would not be a priority personally because it just costs, it just costs. It would use.
It's something that has to be done.
Eventually.
We threw it in there.
Can you back up and show them some of the pictures?
Yeah.
Is this?
It is, it is.
Well, I understand. The structure has got some serious problems associated with it. Keeps going up if you can, I know it's slow.
I was surprised to find out it wasn't a bridge.
Yeah, it's just a culvert with two big retaining walls. Keep going, there you go. See, that is a problem, see that crack?
Oh, yeah.
How, how wide is the road there? It's very narrow.
Very narrow, eighteen, twenty feet maybe.
It's.
It's.
It hurts a lot by using that road.
And I'm recommending a thirty foot, thirty one foot wide road so that you can get a two lane road in there. And then if you ever want to do sidewalks and stuff, you don't have to widen your bridge, so.
Well.
I mean, you're really increasing the flow ability.
A hundred percent, yeah.
This is way more than.
Yeah, three five by tens will pass a hundred years.
Yeah.
My, my.
Like, why are we going, okay, so, I mean.
And it impacts the least amount of heat.
And the county's never going to help us with this?
Not unless another project.
This is a city, this is a city road, right?
You know, let me say one thing, I, I think we'd get more bang for the buck if we went Northwest River Road to Quail Run because that road is used a lot more than that section of the road because most people cut at Quail or they cut at Skulls. So that's my personal opinion, it'd be great to do that, but as far as the most bang for the buck, I would. So that's my personal opinion. It'd be great to do that, but as far as the most bang for the buck, I would, I would say I'd put Quail Run. Not because I live there. I've been accused of that.
Keep scrolling up, please.
Yeah, I live on, I live on Northwest, but I'm just saying, I've been accused of that, but I'm just saying that, that section of the road is not as used as, but it's well-run.
Stop, stop. So you can see in that photograph, there's two major cracks on the south side, and I think the other crack on this side is obscured by the canopy, but there's another one. So the, the structure here is, is in very poor shape. And every time it rains, the structure gets weaker, weaker, weaker. One day it will collapse.
So if you think it, like, I mean, you don't know, this is all hypothetical, but if you get another big storm when it happens, you could not have a road right there.
That's right.
So that could be a, if you have an opportunity to fix that, I think that's probably a good.
Flood control is true.
This, this one also, the benefit is, it's a dangerous little stretch of road.
I don't like, I don't walk down that, I don't walk down that way, because if a car is coming and there's two cars, you're.
And if there's two cars, those retaining walls are broke. I would hate to run, you're probably not driving fast enough to break through the wall, but not, not a lot of support there.
Of this project, we would have to close the road.
Yeah.
To do the construction.
That's one point seven. Total, total cost, right?
Well, there's, there's land acquisition. Now you're gonna take land from the.
HOA.
The HOA and the manufactured home property.
Lay out if you can.
And Melon Mart.
Yeah.
Those two duplexes.
Yeah, so I'm calling for some right-of-way acquisition on both sides, because it takes a lot of equipment to build that retaining wall, so I gotta have some space to work. And some of the structure is actually kind of L-shaped underground, you don't see. So we need more right-of-way to hold the structure, and then I need drainage easements on either end to come in and do the final grading and what have you. Not only that, but there's a lot of trees down there. Some of them nice, good chance we'll lose most of those, because we have to do the grading.
Mayor, can you tell me where, where is Ms. Martin's property?
Okay, it's back this way. It's off of the map to on the bottom. So you have the HOA right there. It's real swampy. Her property is next this way. And you can see the foundations where.
Oh, yeah, those Butler home for.
Well, would it go back that far?
No.
That's in the, is that in the floodway, right?
No.
The bridge is on the floodway. It's surprising.
Well, maybe it wouldn't go back that far.
No, it's not. That's why, I didn't think it came back. I was hoping it's on the other side.
None of our projects are in the floodway.
You're on the other side on the, on the north side, you're into that. Do we have a hazard in there with the manufactured home? So that, they're gonna lose a site there potentially.
How many homes are there?
Well, that's that one we have to deal with.
Currently, it's an existing non-conforming use underground somewhere.
That's right. Do we, do we know how, how much water was over the road in fifteen there? Do we?
Oh, it was a lot.
Couple of feet, two or three feet? So would this, this, would this road, would this bridge be higher elevation-wise, same level? So we'd still have the same issue with the walk road being washed out?
Well, no, there'd be bigger culverts going under it.
Do you think, do you think that would eliminate the water from going over the bridge?
In, in lower storms?
I'm talking about a fifteen flood.
Oh, won't have any, yeah, that's flood that comes from the San Marcos River. We can't do anything about that.
This, he's saying this is up to a hundred year, because he's putting.
I understand, I understand. I understand.
It's a much bigger project than you've ever even contemplated so far or anything else.
I understand, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna affect, it's not gonna, it's not gonna eliminate the problem with a big, big flood event. It's gonna go over the road. Okay, good enough. Does the drainage come through those culverts from eighty? Is there culverts originating on the north side of eighty and then the culverts underneath it? And then the culvert runs from eighty all the way to that.
Got a pretty big watershed. I forget exactly how much.
That bridge. Back in fifteen, that was the San Marcos River right there. It'd gone over that. Yeah, I don't like the width of that, because if you're coming from eighty and you see the wall there, there's like just a slight little hazardous little crosshatch, little warning there. I mean, if, if you didn't know that wall was there and you were coming on fast, you're, you're gonna crash into. Have we had, is Tommy here?
Tommy.
Tommy? Have we had an accident there?
I don't know.
Have we had?
There's something like.
What you get, we'll see if there's been an accident there or if there's been, you know, if there's been an accident, or how many accidents, or, you know.
I know a lot of people don't go there, because a lot of people don't drive that way, just because of.
Yeah, the road too, so.
Don't drive that way on the weekends.
Well, yeah.
But then like with, with what he was saying about, because there, there are the trailer houses that are right there, the trailer homes. How much, because there's one that's kind of close to the road.
Yeah.
And I mean, you know, like, we just, we're jumping out of the fire into the prime, prime, and, because on here, it's, you know, it's talking about like, you know, like, the trees again. Now, you know, we're talking about the right-of-ways of some potential homes. And then like these, the mobile homes, those are, I mean, I get it, that's non-conforming use in the, in the zone. But, I mean, still, it's somebody's home. I mean, this could impact, you know, where they're at.
Based on the aerials, it looks like it's only where they park their car. It wouldn't be the home structure. So maybe they're, they're able to rearrange their parking within.
I don't think we're getting any homes on this one.
Their area.
Yeah, they get.
Easements are in the ravine that exists.
Yeah, they'd be washing away in there.
So nothing with the homes?
Well, I mean, it doesn't look that way, but you, you understand there's a non-conforming issue at some point that has to be addressed on that property eventually.
But they've been there this whole time.
I understand, I'm just, at some point.
So if I'm, if I'm looking at this right, there's a vehicle parked, I think, between the road and their home, they would have to find a new place to park that vehicle.
Yeah.
In the entrance.
That's a right of way. Once it's done, that is still.
Like that.
That's your land, that's part of the road.
But they could park there.
I don't think legally, no.
Depending.
I wouldn't count on that.
It's something that the city could, could work on with them as we go through that process.
Any other questions on this one?
So you're saying they can't park there once the construction's all done? I mean, wouldn't it just be graded level there? Not if it just parked there.
Well, they can technically park there, but legally, it's not their property anymore.
Right.
On to the next.
All right, Quail Run. This is an interesting one. So your existing facility is about a thousand feet in length. Right of way varies somewhere on thirty to thirty-two feet. The width is somewhere on twenty, twenty-two. It's in fair condition. It is showing somewhere. My sense is that truck traffic is really tearing this road up. Because I've noticed base failures and the wheel ruts, and that's, that's indicative of very, very heavy loads. So it was, does anybody know when it was redone, when it was?
I think it was done, it was done during Randy's.
Twenty sixteen.
That sounds about right. Bunker was the mayor.
We're nine, nine years into it. Yeah, and it's showing somewhere. And I think the, the biggest complaint about this road is the right-hand turn off of eighty, or off of eighty onto Quail Run.
The right-hand turn on Quail is also sharp. That's what those, I, I actually jumped a truck driver. He had blocked the whole road and that whole road's failing, where they, they thought the stop sign down.
Yeah.
Multiple times, yeah.
Well, I think it's also, I mean, that, that right hand, I mean, I make it every day, that right-hand turn on the Quail Run from eighty.
It's dangerous.
It's hazardous, just because of speed limit on eighty. And people, people don't slow down. They go into the quote-unquote, what my mom called it, suicide lane. And then if somebody's taking a left-hand turn on the eight, on the.
Oh, a head-on. It's gonna be a head-on. It's gonna happen.
It's gonna happen.
That's text thought, unfortunately.
Yeah.
And so on this road, I think this road is, is more of a connector or a collector-type street. And your criteria for a collector is sixty-foot of right-of-way and a forty-one-foot street.
Can I ask a question? So when we just did that subdivision, did we require the subdivision to be sixty feet? Did we require?
They're only owned, they only own from the center.
Okay, so.
Line, so we, they took from the center line over, so it might not, even once probably constructed, likely won't be a full six of them, but at least we'll be three from the center line.
Did we request that of them, thirty feet?
Well, that final plat application is in review currently.
Okay, but I'm just saying, if that's a criteria, I don't remember us clarifying that.
It does.
It does say.
It does, like Jared said.
I can speak. So we, we do have an application for the final plat. We're, we're just beginning to review it. But we did look at that issue. And is it Steve?
Yeah.
Ramsey. I believe he called it a local street for the purposes of.
That was, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, we looked at it and said, it's really a connector, kind of functions as a connector. What you want to officially call it, I don't care. But I think, I think given that it connects eighty to Skull, it's, it's really a collector, and it should be a wider street. Forty-one feet gets you a little bit of shoulder and three lanes, so you have a continuous left. And you have businesses, of course, of the, on the east side, and there's obviously subdivision activity on the right. So a continuous left turn or center turn lane makes kind of sense here, so.
So would that include redoing the road? Would that road be redone? Would it be?
Yeah, that's part of.
And then, so you have a drainage, and what's the cost of that?
The construction cost is about one point six.
One point six.
The construction is.
The construction, the whole job though, the whole job is, is almost, is two point two five.
Because you have a lot of land acquisition.
So the one, that last one, the two, the two point two five five, we'd widen the road. Is there any way we could design it? I mean, the problem is, and we've already talked about no-through truck, truck traffic, we, the truckers are tearing that thing up. And my concern, I mean, we, if we do this road, we need to make sure that, Ken, is there any, anywhere that you could design? I guess you really couldn't. I mean, what could you do to discourage, design-wise, to no-through truck traffic? Anything you could do, like raise curves, for example? Not really.
No, that's an enforcement issue.
Yeah.
If you've got an ordinance that says no trucks, then.
That's what we're doing.
And they will.
Okay, now, so back to that, so could we make that lane more of a, not, a better turn lane? As far as, I guess we could not modify anything on text stock, correct?
Sure we can.
So we, could we make a turn lane? On eighty?
Right turn lane?
Yes.
You can. I don't think it's, I don't think it's quite necessary. I think textile will argue that there's not enough.
I mean, I guess.
Hold on, let me finish.
I'm sorry.
I think textile will argue that there's not enough right turn movement to justify that lane. But we can put in nice, long radius returns, so that the trucks can make the turn without having to swerve into the other lane and, and to be able to do it safely.
Is it, it would be.
Put us on the sketch. I've got nice, long radiuses in it.
Would it, would it be, would it be possible to, if we decide this one, to work with textile, communicate with them, saying, hey, we're gonna redo this road?
We'll have to permit our work with.
But no permit, but can we maybe negotiate with them, saying, you know, it'd be nice to have, if y'all could do a right turn, like, because I, I use that road all the time. That thing is deadly. I mean, it's extremely deadly. There's been accidents, multiple accidents there. And in fact, I mean, textile's so incompetent that I had to weed eat the grass myself, because I couldn't see it anymore.
Well, I got an accident there.
I know. So I mean, a friend of mine almost got killed there. So if we could, that would be great if we could.
I think.
Could we do that, Tommy? Because I mean, we're talking about this project, you know, we're talking about Quail Run and eighty. Incorporate this project like that drainage culvert, maybe, you know, make a, make a turn lane there. I don't know.
I think, I think what you're saying is a good point, but I wouldn't use Quail Run if that bridge, if it, if we widened Northwest River Road. And, and this isn't a personal thing, but I think it'd be a lot safer just for the community if we made Northwest River Road a little bit more accessible in that area. I would just take Northwest River Road all the way from eighty-four.
Yeah, you would, but I'm saying the, the odds that be more accidents would occur there. If we're trying to save lives or accidents, I think that would, that was a lot more, it's a lot more dangerous than.
Oh, wait, you're saying the people go to eighteen eighty-four.
Yeah, people would take, yeah, would use that instead of going to Quail Run. I don't take Northwest River Road, because it's more.
Because of the bridge.
It's a horrible road. If we can make that road wider, a lot more people wouldn't, people wouldn't be using Quail Run. I, I know.
I would disagree with you on that one, but that's just your.
But it's, it's not safer to get out on the other end, like on eighty side, because there's no light. Everybody's got to try to flash away across there, because there is no light. More people probably come down and turn onto Quail Run, coming into town and going back across Skull and so forth.
Start with the stream.
Then people do going, going right and going up to eighty.
So Tommy, I got a quick question. If we had many accidents, showing that bridge, Mr. Turk, that bridge we're talking about, the, on Northwest River Road. You know, if we had a lot of accidents there?
No.
Have we had any? So.
I worked one there, but it was during the, during the rap race, and cars were parked everywhere and someone hit a car.
During what race?
During the rap.
Oh, 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 yeah. First party, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So I might, I guess, nobody's really an expert on this, but is, is there any way, I mean, I'm just asking this. Is there any way, if we pick this road, say, textile, we're gonna do the spade or drainage, Jerry, is there any way we could work with you guys and possibly during this construction, they'll could make a right turn lane? Is that feasible, Tom? Or they don't do it that way?
Where would you put, where would you put a right turn lane? Where would you need a right turn lane?
If one, Quail, going from Highway Eight on the Quail Run.
Just talking about a right turn lane here, making the right on Quail.
Oh, on two Quail Run. Oh, yeah, that'd be a touchdown issue there.
But do you think they would work, you think that, Mr. Turk, they could work with us in your experience?
Um, again, if we do this project, we're gonna have to interact and work with textile anyway. And we'll, we'll, we'll work out the, the best solution that's in everybody's interest.
But in your, your experience, does, does, does sometimes textile say, well, heck, you know, this is a safety issue. We hadn't had enough deaths yet. But, yeah, we could possibly work with you guys. Is that feasible?
Yeah, it, it's feasible. And like I say, based on my dealings with textile, what I think they'll do here, I think they'll say, hey, we're hesitant about a right turn lane. But the long radiuses will accomplish the same thing.
Yeah, a wider.
And if we have to do a right turn lane, it's no big deal, you know, a couple hundred feet or twelve.
There's likely twenty years from now, twenty-five years from now, the north part of Quail Run, towards eighty. It could, could turn into another collector.
I was gonna say.
There likely would be a light at that intersection if these industrial complexes get built, distribution centers and the rest. So there, it's likely that.
It would be.
That could turn into be a light.
That's what I was gonna say. That's why we, I thought we got ahead of the game and made it out of, of trucks, because that smart.
And what is? What is the status on that?
It's passed.
Passed, we gotta put the sign, okay. Another question, have, how many accidents have we had there? At Quail Run and Highway Eight?
A lot.
Any fatalities?
No. I think there's one.
No, this other one. The, the crashes that we have there at that intersection are really not ones that are turning, are really ones that are, that straighten out the road right there and go straight across coming north. Or they come down and hit the guardrail going south. That's the majority of the crashes that I've had. They.
Crossing the center line?
Crossing the center line and slamming into the guardrail, either heading, heading north or heading south. After you got the, the drain culvert coming across, cars usually come straight across and, not quite at that angle, but come straight across and hit the guardrail.
Jared, what's the feasibility of this based on?
This, this one was likely qualified for a citywide, then online.
Based on?
My concern is the budget. Is this one gonna go over?
And then like.
Dude, like I'm seeing the, the markings that the road would get redone also, right?
Yes.
But like the road is, it was just like done not too long ago.
The road is in actually decent shape.
Yeah.
But it's only, it's only eight years old.
I can't see why, like, we would put money into the road if it's decent, if it's just the drainage that we're trying to work on.
Well, the. What in the preliminary plat, though? I mean, how much is the developer? I thought they were putting drainage all in there.
They're, they're only doing the drainage for the residential, so it, it likely is not going to have any. They're, they're only doing the drainage for the residential. So it, it likely is not going to have any appreciable effect. Or, or would require a minimal amount of upgrades. I think what we'd be looking at here is something beyond what they were planning to, and that could be a point of negotiation with them. As we get into land negotiation.
But they wanna dump it into the culvert.
Oh, let me, let me say this. For the purposes of this report, we, we kind of ignored what was going on with the plat. Couple of reasons. Time, just didn't have time to figure it all out. Uh, two, it's subdivision, it may never happen. Uh, and, and we had to, we had to move on and make some assumptions. Uh, so, uh, we, we did, we did look at what they submitted and. Not, not being in on the preliminary plating and all that, we didn't quite understand the rationale of what was going on. So we, we just said. Put that aside, deal with this later. Uh, i- if, if we do collaborate and they do contribute to some of the drainage improvements. It can only lower our cost. So we were trying to be conservative. So we basically ignored that subdivision.
Hey, quick, quick question. Back to, back to Quail, Quail Run. That road is only, is only seven years old. And, and your opinion, that road, that road is not, it's not really aging well.
So it's, it's, it was, it's an overlay over an existing road. It's what we did on Lockhart Street. So there wasn't any improvements done to the base.
Yeah, that road, but, but that road, but that road was never in, in the condition of, of Lockhart Street. That road was bad. It was terrible before they did that Quail Run. I lived here. It was, it, it was.
Might be white after seven years.
It's acting like it should.
But I'm saying, I think it never had the, the, the foundation or the base of Lockhart Street. But my guess, my, my point is, if we did that project, could we make that road better than, than the original?
In the process, I've got a complete reconstruction.
So could we?
And I've got a beefy base and stabilized subgrade because I know there's truck traffic on it.
And we need to, but I'm saying that road, it, it's really, I mean, it's only set, it's only, like I say, it's only seven years old.
I, I just wanna say, look at, when, like, whenever I, whenever I hear that, it makes me think, okay, Martindale. Yeah, they had, they're redoing a road that's already, that's been recently redone. And yes, they're being accommodating to this. Nice subdivision that's gonna be coming into this, to the city. I mean, it doesn't seem like, I mean, it doesn't actually seem like that, but that's what it's gonna appear. If we're already getting stuff for trees and for everything else, I could just, you know, how is that gonna look as a, as a city?
There's thirty-six homes to be built there, correct?
None of that, not, not fronting Quail Run.
Well, and that whole subdivision, cause we're gonna have eleven on the riverside and twenty-five on the. From Quail Run all the way down along Northwest Road. Thirty-six homes.
I think you're probably.
I think it was twenty-four.
On Quail, on actual Quail Run.
But those people, no, cause we just approved the Lanzola subdivision for twenty-five.
Just on Quail Run, not on Northwest River.
You know, they're gonna take Quail Run to get to their house on, on Northwest Road. They're, they're gonna turn down Quail Run and go, go to their houses right there along the river.
So thi- this would not be supporting that subdivision. This is supporting the, the, the safety. And integrity of a collector street, uh, one of the few within the, within the town.
But one house.
And improve the, the drainage. The, the culvert that's there now is undersized. It's really in the wrong place. We've probably spent, I mean, it's not a lot in terms of, of that is project, not a lot. But we probably spend a few thousand dollars every year putting up a stop sign, cause it is, it's overall time, putting up railroad ties and.
That's fine.
We have accidents there quite.
Yeah, safety issue.
For that reason, I think this, this is more than just supporting a, a subdivision.
Yes.
I know the optics, we're, we're taking one of the better roads in, in the neighborhood, in the city and improving it. But the improvements are really a, a total reconstruction of that space.
And see, so it's my, it was my understanding whenever the houses come in, that they're gonna be lining Quail Run, right? They're gonna be facing that way.
Yeah.
So their driveways are gonna have to come right there to be able to turn into the houses. So that's also gonna, you know, impede on the road that's redone or that's done now because there is a kind of a dip there, isn't there?
Well, yeah. Then they're gonna have to navigate across and.
Oh, Turk, Turk.
I think if, to answer your question, man, if this becomes a reality, they're probably gonna have to rethink their subdivision.
But we're already going through the final plat, though.
I know, and that's why this is an intricate project. There's some complexities to it. Yeah.
So I, I guess my, my last question to you is, in your professional opinion, could you build a better road than we have now? That would last longer because.
Yeah, starting from scratch.
But I'm saying, uh, but the other road was started from scratch. No, it was not an overlay, guys. It was, it was not an overlay. I lived here. It was not, it was gravel. It was holy, any asphalt on that thing. Quail Run was, was terrible.
Our, our costs include full reconstruction.
And would be, uh, we hope we could get.
It's not for a twenty-year life.
Okay, but we're gonna have a hit, even though we do have through truck traffic, we're still gonna have trucks come through there. So it's.
They take that into consideration when they.
So we would design that road for heavy use, for heavy, for heavy trucks, right?
Twenty years.
For truck traffic, it's different than, it's, I mean, you're talking about a heavy, they'll tear up a road. You know that. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Here at Quail Run and Highway eighty, there's, um, uh. Construction going on right now for signals. Is that just gonna be a blanking line or a full?
I saw the equipment. I thought it was for something underground utility. I didn't think it was a signal.
I thought it was for the right away for the, um. The fire department. That's what they were getting ready for.
That's probably what.
I don't think it's a signal. There's, there's not enough traffic to warrant a signal. It'll be a while before that's.
Well, Kimara, I think we can start voting on this tonight. But our priority, everybody's seen it. Let's make, let's make, uh, let's make a call. Do we do the S? What's that?
The S turn, yeah, we did.
What was that one? I'm sorry.
Uh, the S turn's already covered on, on this turn. This is new money.
Well, it was the S curve to Quail Run.
Can we, can you just ask? Can you just ask each council member and you give their priorities like one, two, three?
Yeah.
I'm ready. I'm ready to go.
Okay, go ahead.
One of the things we talked about, what, the real, my real concern was the actual drainage there at, at Quail, at Quail and Northwest River Road.
Yes.
And we, you didn't isolate what the cost is to improve that. I mean, we already have a subdivision going in. It's gonna be improving in theory with, with the drain. Yeah, I know, I know, roll your eyes. It's okay. Um, the drainage along that side of the road, the real issue is, I know on the, on the riverside is the header there. And I talked to Steve at the water company, there's some water issues, waterline issues over there. What is the actual cost just to do that?
I didn't, uh.
Good question.
Yeah, I didn't break that out. Oh.
Cause really, that was the original, that was the original project. The original project was going all the way there.
Overlap.
Get to the, but you know, I guess, I, 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 no, no, I, 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 I feel you, I feel you. I know. But that brings, I'm more concerned about, you know, maximizing the budget.
I think, uh, i- if, if you wanna consider that piece as part of Northwest River Road and the project that I described. Three hundred thousand.
Yeah, so. That seems reasonable. So basically, you're saying extending Northwest River Road from where it is now to Quail and do what we were supposed to do originally. Instead of the being one point seven million, it'd be closer to two million dollars, what you're saying.
It'd be close from seven hundred thousand to about, well, over one million.
Cause it'd be.
Oh, it's only seven hundred?
Yeah, so they'd take it to.
So that only brings it to.
Oh, it's cost effective, yeah. Cost effective. Okay. Or you wanna do a straw poll? Just do a straw poll. Are we allowed to make a decision? I'm, I'm ready to make, I'm ready. We've been talking about. We talked about it enough. I mean, I'm ready to discuss. I mean.
Make a motion, Mike, get to the.
Well, I'll, I'll be honest, I wanna make a, like a list, like a, I don't know. Okay, I'll make a motion to, let's see. Do I wanna say one, two, three? Go with the top three, the top two?
You have, I think it was a two point three million dollars, so.
Okay.
What, what, what bit are we putting in?
Give me one project. It could be a combination of projects.
Uh, we, we got two, let's see, so we're gonna go over, um. Okay, I will just talk out, but for me, priority, but we have limited funds, would be the safety issue. Would be Quail Run to Northwest River Road, redoing Quail Run because of the issues we talked about. But we don't have the funds.
It would, it would take all their funds.
It would take you all.
Okay. We got an, we said two point, we got two million, it's two point two.
It's about, we got two point three.
Yeah, two point three seven five.
Yeah, so you can do it.
Okay, I, that's my, that's my choice. I'll, I'll, I'll vote, I mean, I make the motion to, to Quail Run, South. South eighty to Northwest River Road.
Do what?
He's picking option number, number six.
Number six, last one, that's mine. That's by choice. Yeah.
Okay.
I just, I spelled it out.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Well, I lost that one, I could tell already. Let's go to the next person. If I can't even get a second, it's time to go on the next.
Number six, Mike, number six? Is that what you want?
Number six, but we, we don't even have a second on.
Well, hey, you guys have someone.
Hey, you're up, bud.
All right. Well, I want, I wanna spend more than two point two seven five. That's the problem. That's the problem.
Can't always do what we want. That's right.
I'm telling you, man, that's the problem.
Okay, somebody else?
Two million dollars sounds like a lot of money. It seems like we could decide something. I just wanna say, um, like for those of us that have been on the council for the longest, I mean, Mike, uh. You know this as well, when we did the poll for the streets in Martindale, and then we went through and we raided it up. And everybody, uh, thought that Gonzales Street is a street that really needed, um, some help. And I know that that was like a top priority when we did that, uh, poll. Um, we never did follow through as a city with what we said that we were gonna do then. And I think we put a lot of focus on, um, well, you know, streets that, they are in pretty good shape considering in Martindale. Like, you know, when you go from like streets that aren't so good to like, you know, some that are good. To me, Quail Run is, is okay. I know that right there, the culverts are bad, but I don't, I think the street.
I think ultimately, I get what you're saying, but I, I don't like any of the top three.
I agree with you on that because they're not through.
Well, they're not through. I agree with you on that. The feasibility is harder and then you.
So we're getting, we're getting there. So the first three.
First three, I don't think are an option for us. I don't think, I don't think we're gonna mess with that. I personally, I personally like.
You want the bridge.
I want the bridge.
You want the bridge.
Gonna be the best use of our funds. I feel like it's gonna be. But it'll look good for the city to take care of that because it's an issue. I feel like we'll see a lot more traffic on that.
Make a motion. Go for it.
Um, I just don't know if it's the right time to make a motion right now on this.
I'll make a motion. I actually could have modified because I want, I agree with you. I, I believe the bridge needs to be done, so. I can make a motion to we do number five and then add the intersection of Quail Run. Anything we can do to fix that culvert going underneath the road there to where it should be.
If we don't, before, I'd like to get clarification from Jessica, the exact number. Of, of the grant funds that are available. There's a potential. If we're looking at the total cost here at two point four, if we are at two, three, seven, five. Given where we're at budgetarily, I think you might be able to do projects four and five, depending on what. What's, uh.
I mean, that's ideal. Those are the two that I wanna do. I mean, I agree with you. I, I, I would like to fix it so people would go to nineteen eighty-four and use the light.
I mean, that makes more sense than.
Jessica, go, go ahead. What, what was the, the total?
Jessica, Jessica, if your mic doesn't work, you can type it for me, the exact mod amount.
The S first.
That's available.
Four.
Oh, um, you sounded very low.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, yes.
Sorry about that. Uh, yes, you just wanna know the total construction budget?
The total, the total budget for the entire project. Not just construction.
Yeah, the total allocation is two million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. One point nine million of that is construction.
Oh.
There, there's a space maybe to do four and five. Problem is that. Four did not include the culvert. So we had three hundred thousand to the culvert away. And we start, and we're starting to, to bust.
Yeah.
If we do four and five, how much are we over?
A hundred green. Uh, we're, yeah, about a hundred, about a hundred thousand over. Um, and then if we're at the, you know, the, we're back to the napkin wrong of the culvert. We're not at two seven, and we're about three hundred thousand short. Or four hundred.
I mean, that might be closing up, guys. I mean, I, I've tried to be conservative in my numbers. You know, over the next couple of years, they could come up with their own hundred thousand.
We should get some money from the subdivision for that one.
We should be able to negotiate some of that.
Some of that from them.
Oh, then.
Not a whole lot, because what they're gonna say is, they're only required to do what the impact they have.
Yeah, but. You know, what do you think that is, fifty, a hundred? What do you, I mean?
But it does increase the value of, of the property that's not being developed, that's already drainage provided. And then new developers have come in and do that. So there's, there's some benefit that we're giving.
So you did make a motion, yeah?
Yeah, make a motion to do four and five. Plus, plus the, plus the improvement of the culvert at Quail.
Oh, well, that's. You just busted at the.
I can't do that.
Should we do, um.
Right now, we're over by seventy-five. We don't do, we don't do the culvert at Quail.
Would it make sense to do more of an, um, hot mix two-inch overlay or something like that? Without doing a reconstruction on Northwest River between the S curves?
That's me. That doesn't qualify. We checked.
Great jet.
You oughta seen the look on his face.
That's a hard, that's a hard no.
Yeah, uh.
Seems like there's a way to work this equation to where we can improve the culvert in some way.
Jared, is it okay if I make a comment?
Yes, please.
The other thing to consider is if the. Plaid application, depending on the re-engineering review, might change. That intersection somewhat in terms of the turn radius and things.
Jessica, what was the comment?
Yes, I just wanted to say, uh, these are all great projects, um, for this allocation. Um, if you still need more time, I just wanna throw this out there. GLO is allowing us to ask for extensions to submit this application. I know it's due December first, uh, so if the city were to want to ask for a small extension, they will allow that.
How, how long is the extension usually?
Um, we've asked for forty-five days and I've got accepted for up to three months. So it just depends on what, how much time we need.
I feel like time is.
How risk adjusted are these numbers, Tom?
Oh, what?
How risk adjusted are these numbers? Are these, are these carrying pretty high inflationary projections for the, for the construction phase? Are these using present year dollar construction costs?
It's present value.
Present value.
Um, and we've tried to be conservative, but you know, there's stuff we don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, uh, we, we usually end up using all those assumptions at the end of the day, so.
Yeah, so if we needed to dig out three hundred thousand, there's a way to do it. It'd be some difficult choices to make, but there's a way to do it. I think the city could find it.
Okay.
Deferring maintenance on our wastewater system and other things.
Okay. Uh.
You're, you're, you're Robin Peter to pay Paul at that point to, to make the full project work.
I think we should do that.
Okay, I'm, I'll make a mo- another motion. That we table this for, uh, for further discussion.
Ask for an extension.
Decision, uh, since we, 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 we would give an extension, we have an extension to, to consider Lanzola development.
When are you going to be finishing? Oh, well, like, I can't ask a question.
There's my motion.
So you're, so basically you're asking for an extension. I second that you ask for an extension. Are all those in favor of asking for an extension?
Okay, so Mike made a motion to ask for an extension, right? Is that your motion?
Yes.
And then Matthew seconded it. Is there any more discussion?
When do you think you'll have the review of the final plat of the Lanzola Quail Run subdivision? When do you think you would?
What did Kerry say the other time?
Uh, there's two coins, there's two sides to that coin. We can either go ahead and have that planning zoning meeting the seventeenth. However, we can't guarantee that it'll get approved. There, there's still several comments and revisions that the, the developer's engineer has to make for us to even make any recommendation for approval. So that, there's not a guaranteed answer on it, but the next planning zoning meeting for the Lanzola development on Quail Run is, um, the seventeenth of this month.
Okay, so Adrian, do you think forty-five days is act, is, is enough time for us to?
Jessica, how much time are they granting?
Yeah, how much time we get?
You can get up to three months. I've gotten accepted for three months.
So we got, we got three months from today. Is that correct?
From December first.
December first, so more than the three months. Okay, so, so that would give us, Adrian, that'd probably give us adequate time.
That probably gives us enough time. The three months definitely.
I just want to say, I don't think our decision should be based upon or have to wait around on what Lanzola is going to do. I don't think that, that has to be a factor in deciding in what we do or what we don't do.
I'm kind of confused on why we, what, I mean. Well, we need to, I mean, we can rework numbers, but even then, it's like, we do need to know what our priority is. And if we can do something else with the money, then we should maybe, let's allocate it towards the secondary, towards secondary project. But I think ultimately, these numbers aren't going to change, so we might as well pick up a primary project, right?
So we need to make a motion to go with a project and have, and have forty-five days to, or three months to, uh, make it.
To make the numbers work and if we can, if we can, if we can make the numbers work to where we can extend even just the road from Quail Run, from the culvert to Quail Run, then yeah. Or if we can, if we can make the numbers work to where we're, if we're including the culvert and cold run, coil run, then sure, let's do that. But I don't think we need to. I mean, I think we can make a decision right now what we want. I mean, those are the projects that we, we can all agree on, right?
Like, well, let's have a, we got to vote on this.
Do you mind if I respond, uh, to the councilwoman's comments?
Okay.
So, uh, unfortunately, the Quail Run project is very much intertwined with that development. Based on where that development is in the approval process. You've gone through a preliminary plat process. They submitted, commented, it got approved. All right, now we're in, in the, in the final plat stage. Um, as I said before, if that project becomes a reality, uh, there, there has to be changes on their side. That is something they would have to consent to. So the city and the developer would somehow have to work together to make that project happen. It is complex. It is very much tied and you can't undo that. It is what it is.
So then that makes me think that probably that shouldn't be one of our priorities. Maybe it should be the culverts there at the end of the road. And then, you know, with Lanzola, if they need, if they want to do improvements, um, to right there where they're going to be doing their driveways and everything, then that's on them, like you said.
I, I believe they have culvert improvements.
They do. They're small.
Yeah, they're, they're smaller than what we're proposing and, and maybe that's where you work a deal. If you're going to spend this money on that culvert, can, can you take that money and apply it to this project? That's the kind of conversations.
So maybe we need to just think of put the extension in.
And see, so then it makes me just like think like, what, I mean, what about nineteen seventy-nine? What about the houses over there?
Yeah.
What about the culverts over there? What about what needs to happen over there? Here we have a new, brand new subdivision that's coming in. They're able to do this for their residents of the nine or ten ounces that are going to be. But what about our residents who have been here for years and years and years and years? And those roads have been neglected and not overlooked.
Bacchus Road is a, is a gravel road right off of nineteen seventy-nine. Bacchus Road is one of the worst roads in town.
Private.
I, I think there's a strong argument to who made that's a private road.
Oh, it is private?
I thought it was a street.
There's a strong argument.
I don't know for sure.
We, we don't know who owns the street behind us here. We don't, you know, we, we don't even know that. We don't even know who owns the black walk.
We got a motion to table this. That's the motion. We can.
Yeah, we have a motion to ask for an extension.
Yes, yes.
And to.
That's the only thing I'm.
We have a second.
Yeah.
So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. There you go.
Three ayes. Are there any noes?
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna re, I'm just gonna recuse. Yeah, abstain.
Good enough.
Sam?
Uh, I'm going to say yes for an extension.
Okay, so that's four yeses. The motion carries.
Could we have a workshop that the neighborhood, the people in these neighborhoods come to speak if, if they?
You know, uh, let me just make one little comment. We spent a lot of time last week putting out a, a newsletter and stuff. Uh, we've got it on the website. We were asking people to come for Monday night. We were asking, we put quite a few things on there that we said were happening. Um, this, including, you know, city council meeting tonight. Um.
And no one showed up.
And you, you know, how do you?
I know you've done your best. You, you really have.
I mean, you go to people and you even talk to them and tell them what's going on and that they may be interested. I even sent out a little blast about noon to the historic commission thinking that some of them might come like Carlton and, you know, they're not here. So I don't know.
Some people are on Zoom, so, tonight. Okay.
We have to do flyers. Just go door to door and put flyers on.
And it was raining all last.
I think, I think table it was a good decision.
So I want to thank everybody for the really good questions and discussion. Um, I was not looking forward to this meeting.
Wait till next week.
But, uh, no, really, you've, you've been quite nice. The discussion's been very productive. And I, I learned a lot from what you had to say. I really appreciate it.
I mean, I, and Mayor, I just want to like go off of what you said, like, you know, you put out the things you do with it. But I think like the most important part, like us as council members, is to have like conversations with our community and for us to be in the community and like for me to be able to say like, what about nineteen seventy-nine? What about the road over there? That's because, you know, you're able to, uh, immerse yourself in the, in the community and you're able to have conversations. Some people can't make it to the meetings. Like before this, I was with my family because, you know, we were having a memorial service. But I found it important to consult. Sometimes we need to be available to the community as well and be their voice. That's why we're elected.
Okay, is there anything to add to the future agenda items? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, I just, when are we going to work on the contract? Is the library contract getting close?
Um, it was in their court and they have now asked to talk to us next week, so.
Okay.
And then tomorrow's going to be the, uh, Film Fest over here for the Dark Sky Ordinance. Uh, they're showing it in Martindale. And because they're wanting to showcase Martindale's Dark Sky Ordinance, so the filmmaker will be showing the film. And then we'll be having a discussion. Uh, I'll be introducing, uh, the film if anybody wants to come, wants to.
Good job.
Dark Sky Ordinance. So if anybody wants to be there tomorrow, we can, don't talk to me about nothing else. So we won't have a forum. Or anything. Go stand way over there or something, but, uh, as soon as it gets dark.
We don't want to have the violation.
The light, the light's being turned off tomorrow.
That too.
And then it'll be turned back on on Monday. It was fifty-five dollars. How much was that? Fifty-five dollars. So that wasn't bad.
Hell, yeah.
That's a way to really promote Martindale, being good gamers. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Good job. Thank you, guys.